Any other council members have an announcement?
I'd like to say how much I appreciate what you all are doing. And really, coming from a law enforcement background, what you're doing is very important for our community and you're to be commended for what you're doing. Commended these young men for being here tonight and proud of being part of this group and like to see more of it. It's really a good thing to do and I really do appreciate it. You're really making a difference.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Tommy. Certainly. All right, we've also got some Boy Scouts here tonight. Would somebody like to stand up and tell us what your group's doing and introduce your fellows there?
I'm John Farr, Scottmaster of Auburn 11.
Thank you.
I'm John Farr, Scottmaster of Auburn 11. And we are here to see a council meeting as part of our citizenship in the Community Merit Badge.
Good, good. Thank you all for being here. You come back anytime. If you have to get a badge tonight, you're always welcome at city council meetings, but we appreciate you being here tonight, okay? Thank you for your work volunteering for these young people. Okay. All right, anything else, council? Any other announcements?
Briefly.
Yeah, sure.
Councilman Smith and I had the opportunity today to spend some time with the Auburn Student Veterans Association. And it's run out of the, what's the student, who's the office oversees that on campus?
I'm on the spot.
Anyway. Put her on the spot. Okay. Anyway, we just, I just want to express my thanks to the young men and women that are out there today. There are students at Auburn who are indeed veterans. Many of them are veterans of combat in our nation's longest conflict. So, just once again, I just want to say thank you to them, first off, to the university for reaching out and helping them make the transitions to civilian life and back into academia and learning things that will improve them and improve the society as a whole. And I encourage all of you all to do the same. Reach out when you come across a veteran or a serving service member or a first responder. Just take that extra time to say thank you. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Griswold. Appreciate that. All right. Auburn University Communications. Do we have a representative from the university? Okay.
Office of Student Affairs. That's who has that program.
Good evening, council. My name is Jack Grenfro. I'm a junior information systems major at Auburn. I have the honor of taking over Director of City Relations for the next year. Met with Caroline Willoughby today, actually, and I'm very excited for this opportunity. So that being said, I'll go right into our SGA update for this week. We hosted Creed Week last week and it was a huge success as SGA partnered with multiple campus organizations and celebrated a different line of the Auburn Creed every day. Auburn University is excited about the groundbreaking of multiple projects around campus that will enhance the community, such as the Rang Culinary Arts Center and growing the research part. We are proud to honor former Mayor Bill Haim in this expansion as the inaugural member of the Auburn Research and Technology Foundation Leadership Wall. We also have, we are hosting CIA Director Haskell this Thursday. This past week, our lobby board participated in lobbying efforts in Montgomery for Higher Education Day and Lobby Day. And we are continuing these efforts as the state decides how to educate, how the education trust fund is distributed. That's all I've got for you this week and look forward to continuing to bring these to you all.
Thank you, Jack. We look forward to working with you, man.
Absolutely.
Mr. Mayor, I've got a couple of announcements.
Ward six, we're going to have a ward meeting in the public library, Auburn Public Library, April 24th at 5:30. So put that on your calendar if you can. The other announcement that I had was that it's National Telecommunicators Week this week. And that's speaking directly to the 911 operators of our city. That's their week of celebration. If you see one or if you're talking to one, don't call them on 911 to congratulate them, but please, they're a really essential element to public safety and it's an extraordinarily difficult job, having had that experience myself in my career. So if you just wanted to make that known, that it is National Telecommunicators Week this weekend, thank a dispatcher if you can. Thanks.
Thank you, Bob. Okay, at this time, it's an opportunity for citizens' communications on the items on the agenda. This is, you have five minutes to address the council. Please give your name and address for the record. I would like to ask, as I reflected on our most recent meeting here, when you do come forward, the intent is for you to address the council. It's not for you to address a staff member. It's not for us to have a debate with you. It's for you to share some concerns and thoughts with the council. So as we move forward with this time and these opportunities that we have in our meetings, please be mindful that the intent is for you to address us and I hope we'll be as respectful as we possibly can. So would anybody like to come forward? Have anything they'd like to address that's on the agenda tonight? Particularly on the agenda. Okay? If not, we'll move ahead to City Manager's Communications.
Mayor, we have one board announcement for the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. There's one vacancy and it's an unexpired term which begins immediately and will end November 30th, 2020. The appointment will be made at the May 21st, 2019 regular city council meeting.
All right.
Under City Manager's Communication this evening, our first item of business is the consent agenda. Does any council member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda and deal with that item individually?
Yes, 8F3.
8F2 also, please. And 8B, 8 Bravo. B is Bravo.
Bravo.
Yep.
So item 8B, is that it?
Yes, I believe that's it. Is that it, council? I'm sorry, I didn't clarify that. That's okay, we'll move ahead. Yes, go ahead, Jim.
Item 8B is HDI Solutions requesting a tax penalty waiver in the amount of $6,735.17. This was an issue that was brought to us by HDI. There was a turnover in their accounting department and there was some issue that, some reason, that they didn't pay everything that they were supposed to. They are the ones that found this and they brought it to our attention. This is the first time they've had something like this happen.
Any questions for Mr. Buston? If not, go ahead.
This time of year, everybody's very conscious of tax things, so could you please explain what our policies are in terms of waivers for tax penalties?
So, one of, this is just the penalty waiver. We don't waive any taxes. They have to pay all of the taxes they owe. So in this particular case, in all cases, many times, it will be the company itself that finds that they underpaid and so they will report that to us. There is an automatic penalty that is assessed to that for the amount of time, or the amount of money that they didn't pay us and amount of time. But we require that they pay, and if they have not had a tax waiver before, within three years, then we bring that to the council. The council has been consistent in that if this is your first time, you get a waiver of the penalty, not of the taxes, but of the penalty. And what this does is it actually helps to encourage the companies to come forward, if there is a mistake, to self-identify that mistake, pay us the taxes they are supposed to pay us, and not have to pay that first penalty. Now, if it happens a second or a third or a fourth time, we would recommend that they also have to pay the penalty.
Thank you. Any other questions for the City Manager? If not, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, I forgot to, I'm sorry, Jim, on 8C as well. Meant to bring that out.
I'm sorry.
8C, about GE Aviation.
Did you want to?
I'd want to discuss that.
So item 8C is a concurrence with the Industrial Development Board of a set of incentives for GE Aviation. This was the project that the governor announced, I believe it was a couple of weeks ago, and this is the set of incentives for GE Aviation.
What was the, do you remember the amount of jobs that GE was going to add with that?
It's about 50 jobs, 50, 60 jobs and a $50 million investment in capital equipment.
Any other questions?
This is an expansion of a new, which is significant. It is a new engine line that they would make in parts for a new engine line. The current, they are making parts for a different engine right now and they're bringing a new line on, in Auburn. So it'll be two different engine parts that they will be making.
Fantastic.
It's great news and I'd like to commend the city staff. Years ago, getting GE in here, Phillip and his people and everybody that took part in it, it was really good for Auburn and it looks like it's going to be even better for Auburn, so appreciate the hard work.
I concur, Tommy. Our staff's done a fantastic job. We've had a great year in economic development and GE expanding a significant footprint that they already have in our community is great news for Auburn. It speaks to how well this community is doing right now. Any other questions? Okay, if not, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Seconds?
Seconds.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 8F2 authorizes a contract with Hurricane Electronics to purchase P25 portable and mobile radios for the Public Safety Department at a cost of $1,251,543.68. This item was tabled from the April 2nd, 2019 meeting.
All right, are there any questions from the council? Jim, I do know that we've got a number of members of our public safety staff with us here tonight.
We do.
Okay. Any questions for the City Manager?
Is this the most up-to-date version of this radio?
Yes, it is the version two.
Phase two.
Of the P25 system.
And what impact will this have on the public's ability to monitor scanners, for example?
There's always going to be scanners that are going to scan, whether it's digital or whether it's VHF, UHF. It's a little bit more difficult because the channels are digital channels, but, you know, it is secured. It is, the officers and the fire and the communications personnel can talk on different channels. The way the scanners work now is you just have a scanner and it automatically scans the frequencies and pretty much you pick up what the fire and police are saying. It's a little bit more difficult, but there are scanners to do any type of digital radio system. Anything, in the old day, or when the old days of digital, of the 800 trunking and 700 trunking, it was considered secure, but since then, scanners have been made available that will, a little bit more difficult, but it will still be able to scan.
Could you, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Could you or one of the members of your staff address how this is going to benefit the safety of our first responders from a safety aspect?
So this is a much, we hope and we anticipate and we believe that it will be, provide a much better coverage than our current radios do. They also have some features that our current radios don't, like Officer Down, but let me let, let me let Bill James address that.
Well, as mentioned by City Manager Buston, this is definitely some safety features that will assist all of public safety, not just police, but fire, communications, everyone. At the end of the day, we want our personnel to be able to communicate with each other better than we have in the past. Presently, there are areas in town, there are buildings, there are locations that communications are barely possible at all. This system will allow us to do that. There are also features on there like GPS equipment that in these buildings, we should be able to get coverage for the officers and the firefighters inside of these buildings. As has been mentioned earlier, it is more difficult for people to listen and monitor these radios. But more than anything, the P25 compliance is that we will be able to talk with others in this area on the, this is the standard for radio systems that is a nationwide standard today, is the P25 system. So we'll be able to talk with anybody that is P25 compliant, our neighbors, people that work the ballgames, we'll be able to use that to communicate better with them. So it's just a much better form of communication and a lot safer for everyone involved.
Thank you, Paul. Any follow-up on that, Tommy?
I'm glad to hear we're getting it. We've been needing it for a long time. I know from previous experience and I want to commend the hard work that went into this and just glad to hear we're finally getting something that could possibly save someone's life in the future, able to hear better. There's nothing worse than needing help and not being able to get it. And I commend the council for supporting this. Good thing for the city and our first responders.
Thank you. Any other questions for City Manager Buston?
What was our savings again by using this system? I know this was, Montgomery County was going to invest.
So similar, similar systems, now, I don't know of this particular brand, but similar systems that were put in, in our area, cost a number of two and $3 million if you put the radios plus the equipment that needs to go on the tower. What Montgomery is doing is they're supplying the equipment that goes on the tower. So we estimate we're saving somewhere between $1 and $2 million because we don't have to put that out. All we're buying here are the radios.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 8F3 authorize a contract with JLD Enterprises for streetscape improvements and traffic signals on Gay Street, Glen Avenue and Colley Street at a cost of $1,580,105.30.
We discussed this Friday at our work session. Does anybody on the council have any questions?
Yes, I noticed we had no bids, so this is a negotiated price, understand that. Is there any reason why we're not getting bids on that kind of stuff?
Yes.
People are busy.
And, no, I'm speculating, but my, this is not just us. It's happening at Auburn University for their projects. It's happening in Opelika for their projects. We have a lot of contracting work that's going on in the community, in both communities. And even though it's a million dollars, it's a small contract. And so there are a lot of these contractors that are busy, they just don't have time, and it's not enough money for them to actually spend time developing a proposal. At least that's, that is my conjecture.
And how wide did we cast the net on trying to get a bid?
Well, we publish it electronically. We are on, we have a long list of people who have wanted to be on our bid list, so it goes far and wide. It's nationwide.
Okay. All right. Good, thanks. Any other questions for the City Manager? Okay, if not, do I have a motion?
Move, move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Under ordinances this evening, we have item 9A is Reader Delaney requesting annexation of 10.1 acres located on the west side of Stonewall Road.
Mr. Buston, we need to approve the rest of the consent agenda, don't we?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's no problem. That's no problem. It's all good. We're still learning. All right, so you have the balance of the consent agenda that we, that's before you. Do I have a?
Move to approve.
All right, have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda carries. Yes, sir.
Now, we have under ordinances, item 9A, Reader Delaney requesting annexation of 10.1 acres located on the west side of Stonewall Road, .5 miles northeast of Heath Road and Stonewall Road intersection. Planning Commission unanimously recommended this for approval.
I'll introduce ordinance, nationally unanimous consent.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Does anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? If not, Lindsey.
Excuse me, do we have a discussion?
Yeah, questions, they go ahead. Thank you, Kelly. Yep.
Questions? Okay. There's no public safety input to this, and you tell me what the response time would be to that address or to this proposed annexation.
Off the top of my head, I couldn't, I couldn't tell you. I don't know if Chief Langford could.
Off the top of my head, I don't know that I would be 100% accurate, but I do remember measuring it and it was over five miles from the closest fire station. So, you know, North College and Heath Road's pretty, you can drive pretty fast, so it would be over five minutes. It's over five miles, so.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Is there any concern if we were to annex this property that we couldn't provide adequate public safety?
You know, I wouldn't say you can annex your property, but I want to be, I want the owner to know that, hey, you know, you're annexing property way outside our normal boundaries and it will take longer time for us to get there.
Well, procedurally, is there a reason that public safety had no comment on this submittal? That's worth, no comment, but this submittal.
Yes. I actually ran across an email on it and thought, hey, I didn't comment on that. We have a new program, City Works, and like I said, I kind of, in a roundabout way, found out about it. I believe my comments were submitted after the due date for my comments and it was presented at the planning commission. So I can't confirm that, but I think it was.
Your comments were presented to planning?
Yeah, just that it's beyond five mile boundary, which is kind of a, you know, a way to rate properties. One advantage they do have, and I'm not sure what their plans are, but they do have water up there, so that certainly helps in situations when things are.
Thank you.
Also, it notes that the property owners have been notified that some municipal services aren't available. What isn't available up there?
We won't collect their trash. Be, I don't know if, I don't know if sewer is available. Sewer, sewage is not available, so that means they have to have a septic tank. Is there anything else? I think those are the municipal service. Well, we just, we supply water, sewer, trash collection, those are our services, police and fire. But anything, anytime someone comes in, in those areas, whether it's the north, far north or far south, we advise them that, at least right now, they can't expect sewer water and trash, sewer and trash services. As the chief said, there is water service there now.
So why are we annexing property that we can't serve?
It is, it's common that that happens and then as it develops, it will be served. It comes in as rural property.
Do we know what the plans are for the property? Is Mr. Basquiat here? I see he's listed as the representative for that. I don't know if he's here. Mr. Cotton, can you tell us what the plans are for the property?
The 10 acres is actually a part of a much larger parcel. I believe there are relatively imminent plans for that property to be subdivided into no more than two resulting parcels, with plans for at least one homestead within the family, within a relatively imminent period of time.
So this will be one house that we'd be annexing?
Presumably ultimately two, but my understanding is at least only one in the short term.
Thank you, Forrest.
I think that's a fair question, but my thinking on these things is, we want to come into city limits and I think we're better off letting them because you can control what's built on it then. Somebody can build anything they want up there and we appear to be growing in that direction. And I understand your concerns about the public safety, but I just think the way the city's growing in that direction is one of the only few ways we can go. And I would hate to have a piece of property we couldn't, we're kind of running into that on North Donahue where we didn't, we didn't get into city limits when we probably could have. So I think you're better to let it come into city limits and be able to work with them on what to put in there than just get something up there that we can't say so on. That's what I think.
I would just hate Forrest to have to, a few years from now, the place burns down because we didn't get a fire truck out there in time, you know? And then who, fingers gets pointed back at the city? But I understand, Tommy. Thank you.
I would presume, Jim, that there's no cable and internet service up there, this area right now?
I would say, I would be very doubtful that there is.
And the applicant is aware of that? I would hope. Okay.
It is abutted on two sides by two well-established neighborhoods. So I mean, it's not in the middle of nowhere. I mean, it's, it's, it's not in the middle of an undeveloped area. It is adjacent to two established neighborhoods, so while I do understand and agree, it's not, this isn't an island out somewhere. You know what? I think it is keeping in, you know, in tune with what's already going on out there.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, so we had a motion and we had a second, so I'll re-ask the question. Does anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this tonight? Okay, seeing none. Lindsey.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Dixon?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Oger?
Yes, ma'am.
Carson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor?
Yes.
Yes.
Those are all the items we have on the agenda this evening.
Okay. Now, at this time, it's time for Citizens Open Forum. This is an opportunity for you to address the council about anything that you would like. It doesn't necessarily have to be on the agenda. You have three minutes to do that. And please give your name and address for the record. Remember also that we'd like to ask you to please make your comments towards the council and we will respond to you accordingly, okay? All right, anyone like to come forward? Just a minute.
I've timed this at three minutes, so bear with me. My name is Michaela Walton. I live at 210 East Thatch Avenue, Apartment 22 East, Auburn, Alabama. Again, my name is Michaela Walton and I'm here representing my group members as well. We are students at Auburn University and minors in Sustainability Studies and group members in the Sustainability Capstone course. Each spring, Sustainability Capstone students are given the entire semester to work on one sustainability-related group project. And we decided to focus on researching and developing sustainability strategies, strategies for the city of Auburn and downtown businesses. So our initial contact was Mr. Dan Ballard, the head of the City of Auburn's Landscaping and Sustainability Department. He told us that the sustainability aspect of the department is fairly new, so new that they didn't have a definition for sustainability yet, so we developed one. And you'll see it on those pamphlets that I handed out. We came up with Providing for Simultaneous Economic Prosperity, Social Equity, and Environmental Stewardship Across Generations. So we believe that sustainability should be viewed from two perspectives, our current reality and our desired future. So we thought about where Auburn City is now and what we want to see in the future. And you all have already come up with a plan for Auburn's future in the 2030 comp plan and very soon, the 2040 comp plan. And the City of Auburn's vision statement reads as follows. Auburn, Alabama is committed to being an attractive, environmentally conscious community that is progressive, responsive, and hospitable. While the 2030 comp plan has progressive language, we want to see progressive action. So we began researching case studies of various cities, local governments, and businesses that have embraced sustainability from all angles, and we synthesized and summarized 15 case studies for our local government and businesses to use as resources. So we have copies of this research that I handed out to you all and anyone tonight that is interested. I only have a few left. And then we also came up with the Top 10 Sustainability Tips for Downtown Businesses brochure that you all see in front of you. We will distribute that at the next Downtown Merchants Association meeting. These 10 tips are backed with research and they are approved by local business owners, the Auburn University Office of Sustainability, and every tip is centered around saving money while promoting sustainability at the same time. So I have copies of these brochures as well. Finally, I come before you as an Auburn University, Auburn University student, a voting Auburn citizen, a university employee, and a downtown Auburn employee. And my request is simple. Throughout this semester, my group contacted Environmental Services to discuss an expanded downtown recycling program. Downtown recycling for businesses currently includes two things, cardboard and oil. So while this is a great start... So while this is a great start, the amount of glass and plastic that is put into landfills every day by downtown businesses through little fault of their own would simply astound most citizens. So we recognize that there are logistical issues and risk management and red tape, I'm almost done, and other constraints that in developing this program. However, if we are truly committed to what we laid out in the comp plan and vision statement, an expanded, fully encompassing downtown recycling is the first step. The Auburn community, it has too many resources, smart people, and bigger goals to accomplish to not establish comprehensive downtown recycling. And studies show that people expect organizations to operate responsibly to address social and environmental issues. We can, we together can be environmentally responsible and responsive by working together to fully expand downtown recycling into something we can all be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Lindberg B. Jackson, 814 North College. Want to address the expansion of the Sam Harris Park and the walking trails that are under a new comprehensive plan for the expansion of, I guess, some additional recreational facilities there. I'd spoken at Councilman Taylor's last meeting, ward meeting, to Becky concerning my concerns where we have three landfills in northwest Auburn. This walking trail goes through Pleasant Avenue near Sam Harris Park. There is some infiltration. That landfill is spilling over into a stream, a public stream there, where kids will be playing right outside of Sam Harris Park. I shared the pictures with her, but I wanted to let it be a matter of record that there's some danger there, but even though the landfill's been closed over probably 20, 25 years, as you walk that stream, you see old wastes that's spilling over into the stream. So my thinking is, and my best knowledge of what to do about a situation like that, is if we're going to put kids out there, we need to do a phase one study to see, because there are homes out there that has large cracks where this is settling, and some of these homes were built on top of the old landfill that was there. So I think we need to do a little bit more due diligence before we act.